Gary, you're muted.
Yeah, you are.
We're hearing you through Sarah's, but.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate that. So it's eleven o'clock. We'll go and call the meeting in order. We are recording this meeting that has been posted publicly on the city website and doors to right now to the cameras is unlocked. So there is public access available for everybody going or physically or remotely. So then being said, so three things real quick before we get into the invocation. One is everybody's got their cameras on, so we're good there. Second is the microphones. After we do the pledge of allegiance, we'll mute those. And then also, if you look in the upper right of your pad, if you've not done this yet, there is a spot to raise your hand. And what we'll do for a prop from a procedural standpoint for here, when we take our vote and for roll call for attendance, the clerk is going to call each commissioner out individually by name so that you'll give a, you know, a yay or nay on a particular vote item. But then also, if you have a question, because we're going to ask everybody to go mute once we get started after the pledge of allegiance. In the upper right, if you'll click, there's three dots. If you're on your iPad, there is a spot up there that actually says you can raise your hand. And if you could, I'll do mine right now just to show everybody that showing that the hand is raised. I believe it is, right, Jason? Okay, thank you.
You have to look at your participants.
Yep. So that being said, well, that'll be the way that we're going to go. And I'll ask everybody at that point to go into after the pledge of allegiance to go into mute. So are we good with the technology piece? All right, we're going to get rolling here then. So if you would, if I could ask everyone to please bow their heads and join me for our dedication. Heavenly fathers, we come together today to do the work you've asked us to do. We give thanks for your presence and spirit that strengthens us. And some of the most trying times we may ever find ourselves in, we sometimes ask the question, why? Yet we know with the courage, faith, and resiliency you provide us with that we can handle anything that comes our way. Thank you for watching over all those that have taken the call to service in ways that truly define the human spirit you created. We give thanks for the blessings you've bestowed upon us. We humbly ask for your extra presence for those serving our community in these extraordinary times. We give thanks and ask these things in your name. Amen. If I could ask everyone to please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance. Turn my iPad around to get the camera for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And if I could please ask the clerk to roll call for attendance.
Mayor Kerry.
President.
President.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Present.
Commissioner DeShane.
Present.
Commissioner Groeters. Commissioner Heisinger.
Do we get a?
Commissioner Heisinger, can we hear you?
There we go. Good. And then one small thing procedurally too. I forgot to ask the group. So as we go to take the vote and you're sharing that either you're present or doing the yay or nay for the vote, just as you go to give the response, please make sure to raise your hand at the same time. That way our clerk can see it and we can properly identify. So we're good to go. All right. So we are good. I will look for Commissioner Glennville cannot join us today. I'll look for approval of Commissioner Glennville's absence. If we have that, when you make that motion, please tell me that motion, raise your hand, I'll look for support, and then we'll take a roll call vote then. I'll look for a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Commissioner DeShane.
I'll support.
With Commissioner Groeters. And if our clerk could actually, so we have motion from DeShane, support from Groeters. If we could, please call the roll for the votes.
Commissioner Heisinger. Commissioner Groeters.
Yes.
Yep.
Commissioner DeShane.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
And Mayor Kerry.
Yes. All right. Next on the list is Resolution twenty dash five five eight. This resolution is to temporarily amend the city commission's procedural rules during the state of emergency. Pretty cut and dry here. Basically allows us to be able to hold this virtual meeting. We may have one or two of these coming up yet before this is all said and done. So it allows us to relax the, really the commission's procedural rules. So any questions on this? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval by making that motion and then a support with the hand in the air, please.
I'll make a motion.
Motion Commissioner Gilbert, support Commissioner Ken, I think I'll say you second. Any other questions? All right, seeing none. If I could ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Heisinger. Commissioner Groeters. Commissioner DeShane.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
And Mayor Kerry.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. Next on the list, and probably the main reason we're here, is Resolution twenty dash five five nine. This is a resolution approving the installment purchase agreement of a new platform aerial truck. It is also approval, as Darryl will share here, as I turn it over to him. It's also approval for the purchase of said vehicle for our fire department. So with that, Darryl, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay? Sounds like doing well. Okay. First off, I want to apologize for the timing of this. I know this was somewhat short notice of getting this on the agenda and asking for your consideration of this. We would have typically liked to have done this on Monday night at a regular scheduled meeting night. But as we walk through this, I'll let you know, we had some, some timing issues that we needed to take some action on this request within two weeks of when we looked at this vehicle, other to assure that we could have the option to consider it for purchase. So there was a timing issue there that we had to comply with by the end of this week. So hence the short notice and the rush of getting this to you. And again, apologize for the late note or late timing of getting all this information out to you. But I think it's very critical and it's a piece of equipment that we've talked about with the fire department for at least the last two to three years, previously with Chief Walker, now with Chief Felton. And most recently, when Dave was before you in the fall, giving his update of the fire department. I think most of the discussion centered around equipment and the need for enhanced equipment in the fire department. And specifically, the need to replace a platform vehicle that we have, which is currently a nineteen eighty seven vehicle, experiencing a lot of repairs over the past couple of years. And that's been no secret to any of you, nor to Alex or Dave, who are both on this call as well. So they'll be happy to chime in if you have any questions. But as we talked with Chief Felton in the fall, we had asked Dave to consider all options when looking at replacing the platform. So since that, and we also had anticipated budgeting for a replacement of this platform in this upcoming twenty twenty one budget and, and the subsequent budget. And we've also put money away already in anticipation of this. So this is again, not a secret. It's a vehicle we've been planning on purchasing over the next year and a half. And as we talked with Dave in the fall, we asked him to look at what options are out there. Are there stock vehicles? Are there demo vehicles? Are there trucks that are in production? Because we knew the urgency of replacing this vehicle in our fleet. Well, Dave did his homework, obviously, and much to our surprise and to our satisfaction, he was able to come up with a demo vehicle that really suits and exceeds probably our needs for the fire department as far as the needs for a replacement of the platform vehicle. So Dave, in your packet, has a very detailed report, and I'll ask Dave to run through that briefly when I'm done here. But as far as the overall request today, there's, there's two things that we're seeking. One is an exception to our purchasing policy because of the unique way we've, we've approached this and have been able to really stumble upon this request favorably to, to our satisfaction. So that, that is one of the approvals that I would, would ask the commission to consider. Typically, in our process, we would have to develop specs, go out for bid, present those to our finance committee and then to the commission, and then review the bids, approve those. But really, the way this, this whole project developed, I think we're in a very favorable situation, as Dave will explain. The timing of it couldn't, couldn't work out any better as far as replacing the equipment. Now, the timing in regards to what we're dealing with today is not ideal. But I think we've developed a way to finance the vehicle that really softens the impact on our budget from where we had even anticipated two or three months ago. So the first approval again is for an exception for the purchasing policy. And then the second approval, which is the subject of the resolution, is to enter into what's called an installment purchase agreement. Now, these are, this is a finance mechanism that communities can do. Basically, it's a loan from the bank, but because we're a public institution, we have to follow certain requirements. And we've been working with our legal counsel to draft this purchase agreement. We've used this in the past. We bought our sweeper, when we bought our past, some past vehicles and our sewer truck. Also recently, we entered into one of these agreements. So Dan DeVries has been working with myself and Sue Weingarten, our counsel, to come up with the agreement that you have on the agenda. And we've been working with McAtowah Bank, and we received a very favorable interest rate of, I think it's two point one four percent over a three-year period. So what this agreement resolution will do will allow us as staff to enter in this, into this agreement to finance this over up to three years with installment purchases, basically a, a payment of four hundred thousand dollars a year for the next three years. And the way we have it structured is our first payment would not be due until September of this year. You may recall, we have three hundred thousand dollars set aside currently in our budget. So in our, in our current set aside, I should say, and then we had anticipated in the budget we're working on now for next year, another five hundred thousand set aside, and then five hundred thousand the subsequent year. So the, the purchase price of this vehicle is just under one point two million dollars. It's about one point one three. With some of the accessories we need to add to the vehicle, it bumps it up to about one, one point, about one point one eight million. So we're asking for an approval of up to one point two, knowing that we can only pay for what we need to equip the truck illegally. That's all we can finance. So as, as the rest of those details come in, we will work that into the agreement itself. So yeah, so the, again, the resolution will need to be approved to move forward with the financing. Again, I know the timing is not ideal, but I think, you know, we've been planning to acquire this platform for several years now. We have money set aside. We have a very favorable interest rate. And really, the impact on our budgets going forward are less than anticipated than we would have otherwise, because we've got, we were planning on about a one point four to one point five million vehicle. We're able to obtain this vehicle for just under one point two, two million. So I, I'll be happy to answer any questions on the financing side of it. And I know Dave can kind of run through briefly some of the, the amenities of the vehicle and how it will fit into our fleet, where it'll be stationed. And I think all that is contained in his report. But I just want to, you know, thank the commission for considering this. Thank Dave and his staff and Alex and his staff for really looking, finding this vehicle and inspecting it. And really, it's, it will be a top-notch vehicle to add to our fleet and, you know, again, help protect the citizens and businesses in our community. So our recommendation is to approve the exception to the purchasing policy as well as the approval to enter into the installment purchase agreement for the vehicle. So I will answer any questions if there are any for me, or otherwise, Dave can roll into briefly talking about his report. Okay, Dave, I think you can take it away.
All right, pretty much. Can you hear me now? I thank the mayor, Commissioners for being here this evening, or back to this morning to review and hopefully approve this purchase for an aerial truck. We started off this spring with the, the committee of the captain up at Station Three and a couple of his people, an officer from Station One to help out to what we're looking at as far as what's out there. I reached out to E V S, our current vendor for most of our Smell, not Smell, most of our Spartan trucks that we have, R and R Truck out of Livonia, Northville area, and Halt Fire out of the Detroit area for Pierce and Westshore. Up down the line, what demos are out there right now and what units are coming available. R and R Truck was very good as, as E V S as well as telling me what's coming up on the stock line as far as Spartan product. Westshore came back, said they had a demo. It's going to be coming up this spring, and that's when they actually came out to here to look at. So this spring, we had Phil Wagner from R and R Truck come out from the Northville to bring a Spartan L T I midmount and a Spartan Smell room route to come out. We had the garage come out with us to look at it, because then they're going to be maintaining these vehicles to get their opinions and their insight as how well these vehicles are going to be maintained. It was great having Phil come out, see, let the guys get their hands on it, look at the features, talk about other features that are available, go to order the truck. Later in the year, or later in the month, E one came with their H P one hundred truck. And that was a, a night and day difference in engineering between the two, the three products is E one is a far superior engineered product as opposed to those Spartan, L T I, the Spartan Smells. During this time, we had, the current Platform One had a major hydraulic leak in its stabilizing system. So they had to go to E V S while it was up there, as I wrote in the report. They ended up having to do a control block repair, a rebuild, a cylinder rebuild. Then they found two hoses that were bad and needed to get replaced as well. Then they also found a bleeder valve that needed to get replaced, and it was going to be a either. They were looking for a used part market to find a used part for that. And I talked to Mike Zanin yesterday, and they actually did find a part for that, but they still can't get the control block to work for that platform. So it's, that being down for considered about a month, you know, we're in the opportunity of E one product coming up as a demo for sale. It was a, an advantage to us to look at this demo to fit the needs for the city of Walker. It's a, it's basically a twenty-five-year truck. It's built so well. And this, the superstructure is, is very well engineered to support the aerial operations. We were very impressed with the product and what it could do, how it fits with the topography in the city of Walker with the hills, especially on the north side. You look at our North Industrial District along from, basically from Bristol Avenue all the way past Fruit Ridge into the Wilson, or North Wilson industrial areas. These are big buildings and a lot of industry going in there. We're looking at probably another million square feet. Once that Fruit Ridge to Northridge Industrial gets put in, of more buildings we need to protect. The opportunity with, with E one out of Allendale with the Westshore Fire Services that are bringing that in is at one point one three one for the aerial platform. Last year, that would have sold new for one point two million. This year, we're looking at possibly to buy that truck as it sits right now at about one point three to one point four with the additions to get it operational. That'd be the shelving units, seats, radio and communications, intakes to get that operational for us. Right now, we're looking at less than one point two by doing the same thing with this demo unit. I said about this unit, it's coming with a full, as if it was a brand new off the showroom floor. So that's kind of an advantageous is the one-year bumper to bumper, five-year on the engine transmission, ten-year on the stainless steel plumbing pump, twenty years on the aerial device structural, lifetime on the frame. And speaking of the frame, right now, we're dealing with an issue with Alex is staying on top of it with our current fleet. Is there a double frame design? This is a single frame with a torque box integrated into the frame system. It's, it's a super heavy-duty frame. And we're kind of impressed with that when they brought it in there and inject that truck up five foot off the ground to get, get a look underneath it. Ten-year on paint, which is prorated after five years, and a ten-year, a hundred thousand miles on the structure of this vehicle. We talked about having up at Station Three still, just because that's our highest high probable area for anything going on, that truck's going to be in the right spot at the right time. But that's a used citywide, even in the past, Platform One, back when it used to be, you know, one twenty-one, what often comes down into the standout business area for the larger structural fires. I was asked yesterday, how many calls the platform actually ran on? Well, from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, it ran a hundred and thirty-eight calls. Now, you gotta remember, between that same timeframe, it was out of service for eight months, then those two years. And it ran eighteen structure fires. So is this a high-volume call truck? No, but when it's actually used and utilized, this is a pivotal piece of equipment that stops fires and saves businesses. That's really what it's used for. It's a great insurance policy, and it's a highly functional piece of fire apparatus that it's harder, you can't replace it with another engine. You gotta have it. We have neighbors that have trucks, but they're outside the donor ring. If you go to Grand Rapids, that's the closest aerial truck's going to be out of Station Three. Plainfield's got a ninety-five-foot E one out of their Station Three. And then Sparta's got one up in their district. Otherwise, to the south of us is Granville, and to the west of us, it's going to be Allendale. They're all more than ten minutes away from responding to a call. At that time, you're looking at significant fire loss on a business. So it's, it's nice to have this type of apparatus in Walker for our citizens and visitors and keeping our businesses in business. Do you have any questions on why E one? I hope I spelled it out pretty good in the, the letter to the commission as far as why this is a better fit than the other ones? And then why this would be a great asset to the city moving forward and having in place? Because we have unknown if Platform One can be repaired. Right now, it's a hydraulic block that's being backed to the manufacturer who's on furlough right now to see if we can get it back. And we're waiting to see that. And how much more money do we need to put into Platform One to keep it operational if we wanted to wait? I don't think it's going to be as operational. If we do get it back, once the next thing is going to break, to take it back out of service again. Just like we had with the aerial last year is it went from one part getting replaced, have it for a month, use it once, goes back out of service to get repaired again. So it's kind of where we're at with our platform, and this is, it's the timing with the COVID nineteen going on is not politically a great time, but with the interest rates of getting this and the financing that Darryl and the end of Reese had found for us, it's a, it's a, an opportune time to pick this piece of apparatus up and get it in our fleet right away to protect our city.
Okay. I'll open up the floor now for any Commissioner questions that you may have. How about we start? We'll do this by, so we don't all jump in in case you have questions. Let's start with first ward and work our way down. So Commissioner Kent, which you are on mute, by the way.
Okay. No, I just like to thank everybody for, especially the fire department, Dave, for searching into this and finding this. You know, we like to pay cash for things, but when you look at what we're putting away, the money we will save and the interest we'll pay will still come out ahead. And I think it's a cost savings thing for the city, but it's, and also it's a necessity. And, you know, you look at high-rise buildings, but you got hotels, you've got office buildings or three stories and everything. So to get something in service and have it up and operational every day would be fantastic. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is something we've been talking about for a very long time. And I, I think that right now, we're, I think investment in our first responders is a critical service right now. And I think Chief Felton said it best in his report, when opportunity knocks. And here we are with a great opportunity to make a much-needed investment at a great price. So I'm all in favor.
Good. Thank you. A second word, Commissioner DeShane.
Yeah, um, I had an opportunity to speak with Dave a couple of days ago, and thank you, Dave, for that. That was very helpful. Um, I like, I wrote, I jotted down, I jotted down a couple of things that I thought made a lot of sense. This will work anywhere within our city, and also it's going to last for twenty-five-plus years. I also like the fact that he engaged D P W and had them on site so that they could feel confident in maintaining this, this platform truck. I know that it's been mentioned that this is not the best of times to consider this, but I think this is the best of times to consider this. We have more of our residents homebound now where more home incidents will occur. So I think this is the best time for us to take advantage of this opportunity and, and make it happen. We've done some set asides. We had plans to do more set asides. And I think it's time for us to, you know, pull the trigger on this and to, in the safe, for the safety of our community and our people. So I applaud Dave and his team for doing such a great job in finding something at such a good price. And Darryl, thank you and your staff for working out the payment arrangements. I think that was very, you know, very well thought through.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Groeters.
I also echo everything that has already been said, but one other thing is, other municipalities have assisted us along the way when we not really had the thing that we needed. And I, I like the fact that now we will perhaps be in the position to be able to assist our local communities as well. I guess better, better able to assist in the time of need. And thank you, Dave, for your work. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Heisinger.
I was able to speak with Chief Felton for a couple of hours yesterday, and we discussed about this. I just had a couple more questions. If we were to wait on this, is there another opportunity out there now that come up? Like on the road, because right now, I feel like there's a lot of unknowns. Like we don't know what's going to happen the next couple of months or anything with the opportunity. If we would wait like two months or whatever, until we can figure out what's going to happen in the long run with our economy and everything around us?
Right, right. Excuse me. Right now, if we don't take this opportunity and it goes to somebody else, you're looking at fourteen months to order a new truck to get it back here to, and it could be longer now, because COVID nineteen is actually probably pushing that back, that fourteen-month turnaround time, from time of order. Talking to Phil, that you have some smells coming out later in the year. But the one was a midmount that we weren't interested in. And after that, it's kind of looking at the schedules. It won't be until after September. And then we're looking at the new tariff prices too for the different aluminum and steel prices coming in. So there's nothing coming up in the next two months that we could probably look at. This is just one of those opportunities that it's here now. It's a really good product. It's unknown if it's going to be available two months from now. Anyone's not going to have anything for fourteen months, and it'd be a time of order thing. As, as with most manufacturers.
Okay. And then, okay. And then, so if we were to wait, it would be like, we would have to order it then, and then it would be like fourteen months?
Fourteen months plus.
Okay.
Because all the shops right now, talking to Mike Zanin from E V S, even Spartan Motors, who does a lot of the cabin chassis for different manufacturers, they're on furlough right now. And unknown when they'll be back to work. So now that fourteen months is now pushed back, another at least two months.
Okay.
Commissioners, any other questions? So, you know, my thoughts around this, having participated in the last couple of fire trucks that we've acquired, we, you know, we, we've been to three different of the manufacturers that are headquartered here in Michigan and have seen over time how well-built some of these are. I know we've typically gone along the route of the Spartan brand. There's been some consistency from a reliability, from a maintenance standpoint. Definitely just a stealth. From a reliability, from a maintenance standpoint, definitely just a stellar product and the, I think of others in the area as well. There are definitely some, some very good. Options for us. That being said, when this came up here, I think it, Chief, if I'm not mistaken, two weeks ago today, it came up?
Yeah.
So. So when that came up here, the one thing that, that sticks out to me with that is, you know, I saw it with, you know, with, with all of its. Support mounts being put down and it's basically lifting the truck up in the air, something we can't do right now. Something that gets relevant when you think of that new Michigan State Police Building we have going on the north end. And all the growth that's going on up there. You've got a three story building that's actually up on a hill and those stabilizing arms are absolutely critical to. Us being able to get to the top of that building and put a fire out if need be. Right now, we can't do it because the current aerial truck does not support that. And that, one of us, Dave noted in his cover memo to all of us, that, that is a, it's a problematic area on the current device, quite frankly. I, for me, as a leader of the city, I have a hard time putting our public safety, specifically fire in harms way. On something we know not to be very reliable right now. So that, that's weighing me heavily right now. You know, I look at the statistic of out of service for eight months, for two years. It's, it's, we've spent our money out of the, the thirty three year old device that we're discussing potentially replacing. So when I look at this, timing may not be the ideal situation. When I saw the truck and I know that that truck is considerably more, we're getting into demo motto, it's actually the, the nicest fire truck I have seen yet. The thickness of the steel, the, from the maintenance standpoint for Alex and his team, the work that we're able to do on it. You know, the other desirable piece too is a lot of the maintenance work will be able to be done by Westshore out in Allendale. And we've got a local company, whether they come on site or we go out there with it. We're not having, we're probably not going to have to leave the state with this to get fixed, probably that being said, not for the foreseeable future. So there's a lot of pluses with it and I weigh out, you know, the timing, now it's not great, but then I look at the financing piece and, and. I know Dan De Vries is, is listening in and available if we need, but the creativity around the financing piece that, that him and Darryl put together. Made this a, a really for me, a very easy decision to make in the best interests of public safety for our community with all the growth. We have taken place right now and the fact that we have a significant liability with the current device. So for me, this is a, a. While not super easy decision, given the timing, it's an easy decision to make in, in support of it, so. I'll open up if there's anything else from, from the, the managers. Chief Pelton, is there anything else that we have not covered, we should be aware of before? Asking for a roll call vote from the commission.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment quickly?
Sure.
Two, two things on the financing vehicle that we're proposing, we do have the ability, should the economy rebound rather quickly, we could pay this off. Early without penalty if we need, if we want to and if we can. You know, typically we'd like to try to pay cash for these large vehicles, save up for them and pay cash, so. If things do turn around rather quickly, we do have the ability to pay this off early, which will save us a little bit of interest, but we do have to pay it in that September timeframe. And then the second thing over to Dave, Dave, can you touch on the timing of the vehicle? We assume that this gets an okay today. How long before it actually gets into service in roughly?
Okay, I was talking to the Westshore representative, Nick Richards, yesterday on this fact of how long would it take to get this in service? They would need at least four weeks to get it back from Naperville, which we're currently at, to do a bumper to bumper. Maintenance on this. That's all the fluids, the filters, if there's any warm parts, they get them replaced. So it's back to that like new condition. We need, also need to get some shelves installed and a radio installed, so probably we're looking at about an eight week turnaround at best. It could be a little longer, but it's definitely going to be at least eight weeks. Get radio communications put in, shelving units, and then get it in service. For our city.
Longer than fourteen months.
Yeah. Then the COVID nineteen is. Is getting people who are critical workers to get there and get them worked on and. That's the big delay.
So, I don't, I, Commissioner Heisinger?
I have one last question. So I know that we're possibly going to go through with this today. I just have a lot of concerns going forward with this. With the state that we're in right now and how much we rely on income tax in the city and making this purchase right now with so many unknowns that we have going forward. With the economy, so it just has me a little bit questioning the timing right now. And I know we can't do anything about it and I understand the importance of having this truck too.
And I think those are actually, I want to acknowledge this, those are very real and I think they're very legitimate concerns that, that we all have to be aware of. If we had not had the foresight to start doing the set aside accounts that, that were put in place years ago for things like this. I, I probably not as confident in the decision to do this, but the simple fact that, that we already have a quarter put away for it. We're going to be budgeting nearly another half of what was left then. You, that's, if we didn't have that, I think I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned about it, but it's not that I'm not concerned. It's just that we already have a quarter of this aside, but you bring up a very, very good point. Commissioner Kent, I think I saw your hand.
No, but I would comment. I mean, you know, it's a valid point and we've been putting money aside and. I really think that. Somehow, somewhere, we're going to get there. So I think it'll, it'll come through that. You know, like you say, between the budget and set asides that I think will be, I'm hoping we're going to, this will be a good measure. And really, I think the finance, Darryl, Dan, you know, done a good job and looked at a lot of options and. So I think we have to, option A, it'd be to pay it off, but if we had to go to C or D, we, we still have options out there, but. It's may not be ideal what we want, but we're still, I guess, having this piece of equipment is. Really necessary, I feel, for, for paid on call and for constituents.
Thank you. Darryl, I think I see your hand up.
Uh, yes, and Elena, I appreciate your comments and concerns and those were the exact same concerns we struggled with for the past two weeks of how can we afford to do this at this point? So the way we've tried to structure the financing on this is because we have the three hundred thousand set aside. And in the budget we are working on currently for twenty twenty one, we had anticipate, anticipated putting another half million set aside in next year's budget. But the way we structured the payments for this, with the first one not being due until September, we need to make a four hundred thousand dollar payment. So with the three hundred we have set aside, we will only need to budget in the upcoming budget, a hundred thousand dollars versus five hundred thousand. In, in next year's budget. So we feel that getting over that hump of next year, this will soften it quite a bit. And then we'll budget the subsequent year, another four hundred thousand instead of a half million. So. I realize it stretched out over three years, but I think the immediate impact on our current budget and next year's budget is substantially less than we would have otherwise anticipated. So just wanted to kind of clarify that a little bit. So we'll, we'll be seeing really a four hundred thousand dollar less expense in our capital equipment next year by doing the financing in this method.
Good, thank you. I'm looking for hands raised. Are there commissioners, any other questions? All right, I will entertain a motion at this point. If you're not on mute, entertain a motion. For supported, it seems like we have general consensus to move forward with this. I'll entertain a motion. And then support and then I'll ask the clerk to call the roll by commissioner and myself at the end, so. I'll, I'll open it up now.
I'll make that motion.
I think I saw Commissioner Kenny might have been unmuted, so you had.
Support.
Okay, so Commissioner De Shane, support from Commissioner Kent? All right, if I can ask the clerk to please call the roll then?
Commissioner Heisinger?
No.
Mr. Groders?
Yes.
Mr. De Shane?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Carey?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, resolution twenty dash five five nine is passed. Five one for two items, specifically the purchase policy, a relax of that for the RFP and then also the enter into the finance agreement on that and. Thank you all. Great discussion and appreciate everybody being able to confidently share their other few points. Next on the list is the approval of minutes from the March twenty three, two thousand twenty meeting. Are there any questions on that on the agenda? I'm sorry, the minutes, otherwise I'll entertain a motion for approval and support and we'll call the roll again.
Still moved.
Have some motions, Commissioner Groders, we have support?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Gilbert. If I could ask the clerk, please to call the roll?
Mr. Heisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Groders?
Yes.
Mr. De Shane?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
And Mayor Carey?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next on the list, so a little bit different structure just for efficiency purposes. We have four items on here. The first is the expenditures and the amount of two point nine three eight, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and eighty one cents. The second is the traffic control order for the annual Coventry Drive Block Sale, which I have my doubts is going to take place because they have it for the third week in April. The fourth is community development block grant for the hillside sidewalk, something long overdue and Scott Connors is available. If there's any questions on that and he is on the call. And then the fourth is the second reading of ordinance twenty dash five one three to amend the rezoning for two existing lots of twenty forty Kinney and thirty nine thirty one Richmond Court. And so I will at this point, if we can go by ward, I'll ask for any, if there's any questions or discussion placed there, we'll start with our first ward again. Commissioner Kent?
I'm also.
Commissioner Gilbert?
Uh, yeah, I got one probably for Scott. We approved the CBG, we got approved of a CBG funding like last year, if I'm remembering correctly. So I'm just wondering, is it typical for it to take this long to get that sorted out or?
It, it's, the process is getting a little bit longer. Because the, the county is now processing the, the proposals from the engineers and then they're also bidding out the construction jobs, so. It is taking a little bit longer. Now, what, what we've been really good at and one of the reasons we've been getting so many projects is because we've been executing these very early in the spring. And this year, it's going to be a little bit of a different story. It's a fairly easy spring project, but with. The stay home orders and a lot of the contractors are trying to take care of and protect their employees. In this case, K and R is, is, is home now for at least another week. And again, as of three o'clock today, it could be another couple more after that. So we're not going to get out of the gate as quick as we'd like.
Okay, appreciate that.
And I should, as I go to Commissioner De Shane, if there is any questions or concerns with any one of the items, we can remove that from the consent agenda. And still approve others as needed. So I'm not hearing it, but just want to make sure that that's out there. So Commissioner De Shane?
No, I'm good. My only comment would be about the block sale. I mean, are they being realistic with what's going on?
I, my understanding is it's the date that they have scheduled and that was. You know, right now, technically till the governor's press conference this afternoon, the, the order is relaxed, I think, what, Monday night, Sunday night? So their date that they asked for this is with the, with the understanding that right now as it stands, her order is going to be relaxed. You know, early next week and they'd be able to have it, probably not going to be the case, but that is, that is the. Well, I think the, the way the dates are lining up, but no good questions.
Okay. And worst case scenario, we're restricting a small amount of street parking in an area where there shouldn't be any large gatherings anyways, so.
Right.
Fair enough.
Exactly.
Okay. Slide to the third ward, Commissioner Groders?
All good.
Good. Commissioner Heisinger?
All good.
All right, I will entertain a motion then to approve, actually I should ask for any questions with any four of these needing to be removed. Are we good with approval for?
All good.
All good.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Heisinger, we have support? Commissioner Groders, if I could ask the clerk, please to call the roll?
Mr. Heisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Groders?
Yes.
Mr. De Shane?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
And Mayor Carey?
Yes. Okay. So next on the list, and I'm looking, Jason, I do not see anybody else from the public. And we have nobody public in the chambers here, so I'm going to open up for public comment. If there is anybody, if they could raise their hand or just speak up, you've been unmuted. But it does not appear that anybody's on this call that's not a city employee. I'll ask again, is there any, any public comment needed from anybody that might be on the call that's not showing? Going once, going twice, public comment is closed. I'm going to turn over to City Manager comments. City Manager Walsh is sitting to my left, so I'll open with you. You're just good. You're good. All right. Darryl?
Oh, of course I have a couple of comments. Just, just to kind of give you an update, your staff is doing very well here, continuing, continuing to perform our essential functions. We are continuing to have weekly department head meetings. Everybody is, is doing well and we've been rotating staff in as necessary in certain departments. Others are, are off for the, the time being. But everybody is doing well. We've had a few employees that did come down with the, the virus. They are recovering well and almost back to work, so. Everything is good on that end. We, we, since we are not having a staff meeting on the twentieth, I, I have relaxed that for the month as far as not providing department head staff reports to the, the commission. And I'll continue to provide you updates on a weekly basis or, or as needed as things develop, but. Some departments are obviously pretty thin right now and others are doing just the essentials, so I think you see enough of what's going on and we'll continue to. Keep you updated as, as we move through. Dan De Vries and I continue to work in the background on our, our next year's budget and our current year's budget amendments. That seems to be. Changing every day, so we hope to have a finance meeting on the schedule probably within the next two weeks at some point, so we will obviously work that through Sarah. And keep you updated on, on that and get the information out well in advance as opposed to the day before the meeting. We'll give you plenty of time to chew on that. Speaking with Gary Postpon, DPW, we are probably going to be delaying our Walker cleanup days, obviously for this spring. Typically, those are at the beginning of May. We would still like to hold those, but probably later on in the summer after we get through, through the crisis here. We may allow for some leaf and brush drop off, but we're still working out those details right now. And then also in the background, the old gypsy moths are still going to be flying here in the spring, so. We do intend to spray, assuming that that's a function that can occur and that'll probably happen sometime in, uh, early to mid May, depending on when the bloom is of the gypsy moss. Our consultants are, are on that. We will be spraying a lot less this year because we've had, you know, favorable results the last couple of years, but. When that happens, I will certainly, we have to get the maps out and notify all the property owners in those areas that will be sprayed. So I think that's all that I have. I'll again, continue to keep you updated in other means as, as necessary. And again, thank you for the discussion on the fire truck. I think that's going to be a, a vehicle that'll certainly serve us well for the next twenty five plus years.
Thank you, Darryl. I'll turn over to our clerk.
My only update is that Jill and I are continuing to work daily on the May fifth election, going well. Business is continuing.
Thank you. We'll start the awards, Commissioner Kent.
Just, I would like to say thanks for everybody and thanks staff for maintaining the city and doing, we got some things that are central and getting taken care of. And so we're moving forward and hopefully all, everyone feels and everybody does well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilbert?
Um, just a couple of things that I wanted to bring up, keep in mind. Number one, I've seen some other communities have canceled their Memorial Day parades. I'm not sure if we will go that direction, being that the directives that we've gotten so far are only through April thirtieth. But that's something that we should probably start thinking about as it's going, be coming up on us. Obviously, at three o'clock, the stay-home, stay-safe order is likely to be extended. So that's something that everyone as well should be thinking about at the city. And one item for clarification, probably from Darryl, at that finance committee meeting, are we going to be talking about what the budget's going to look like for next year, what our expectations will be?
That is my hope. First off, we want to do the budget amendments for the current year. And then review the IP and then review a draft number two of, potentially of next year's budget. So, yeah, yep, for sure.
All right, I'm good, thank you.
I'll come to the parade at the end then. Commissioner DeShane?
Um, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Carol, Commissioner Glanville called me last night and she was wanting me to express some concern about having meetings during the day. Is there any way that we could stick to our regular timed meetings? Because it's something that the community is used to as well as ourselves, for those of us that are working throughout the day. I, I don't have a great problem with it, but sometimes it does. I know that her, her schedule might not be as flexible as some. So that was one comment she wanted me to forward on. And the other was, I thought the virtual Easter egg hunt was a great rebound since we couldn't have, have the Easter egg hunt on-site, obviously, due to these uncharted times. But what a great idea that staff came up with and I think that that was so cute and fun. That's all I have. And thanks again, Dave, for the work that you did on your fire truck research platform truck.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Rothers?
Just thanks, thanks to all the staff and our public safety folks out there in the field. Thanks so much for keeping us safe and stay safe and practice social distancing.
Thank you. Commissioner Heisinger?
I don't have any.
All right, thank you. On the, a couple of things, again, obviously, the, the staff, the, the, just the, the, really the gratitude for everything that they are helping lead us through here. And to just, you know, it's, the city was running great before any of us came here. The city's running great while we're here and the city's going to continue to run great after we're gone. That's a reflection upon, you know, Darryl Frank, I mean, just, I mean, our city staff, our department heads, whether DPW, police, fire. I just, what, 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 what a heck of a time to be, be in office for the city because we, we're just in a very good spot. So thank you again for all. The Memorial Day Parade piece, we have been actually talking for this about two to three weeks. And I would say probably a week, no more than two weeks from now, before we pull the plug. It does fall under the auspices of public health. I will commit to having conversations with the commission. If you feel like we are going to need to cancel, potentially reschedule, there are some options there. But before we, we, we get down that road, commission will have input on that and we'll go from there. So I would say we're probably, again, about a week to two weeks out. I am going to rely for what it's worth for my own self, I'm going to rely very heavily on the direction from the county. And I'll make sure that that's also being conveyed to the commission. But I think we're a little premature right now for those that are canceling stuff in July, August, September. You know, more power to them and I'll respect their decisions. I just don't think we're at that point to, to be pulling the plug yet. And then I think the last thing is the, or second to last thing would be to Commissioner DeShane's comments from Commissioner Glanville. Timing of the meeting, we, this is a very unusual meeting. We normally don't do this during the day, we're doing this because of the fire truck. I, you know, but I will say this, six of us are able to be on here. Part of one of the, the obligations of holding public office, not only to be accessible to the public, return phone calls, do those things, is also be flexible, sometimes emergency meetings like this come up. So I'm going to stand my ground on this as we needed to do this today because we had a deadline to meet. And that's not typically what we do. If we do another one of these, it may be Monday night, a Monday night at seven o'clock and it may not be. We'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. So message heard, message responded to. And then the last thing is, I will probably tape after, whether I do it this afternoon or tomorrow morning, I'll probably put another quick Facebook video out there, just to short where we're at as a city. For the community, there was, I think, a lot of positive reviews with what I did on Facebook. Whatever it was earlier this week, the days are kind of blending together. So I just think it's very important right now for visibility and communication factor that people, A, they know what's going on, they feel like there's full transparency at all times. And there, there's a sense of common purpose that we're going to get, you know, get through this together. I'm extremely confident right now, I shared with the staff me this morning, just a couple of words of positivity with them is we, we are on the backside of this locally, the numbers prove that. And that's been well over a week plus that those are changing. When you actually look at the state as a whole, the number of new cases are, as of the yesterday's new cases are, they're the lowest they've been since the last week of March, I think maybe the last day of March to be exact. So that being said, we keep hearing that we're hitting the curve, but then there's also too, I think some of that, that fear and certainty and doubt that exists out there. I think sometimes the media coverage hurts us. Not that that's necessarily purposeful, but it's just, there can be a lot of, a lot of angst. And I, I quite frankly, it's not so much the physical health I worry as much, this community, it's the mental health. And what is this going to look like on the backside of this? As we're getting to that second half of this and into the home stretch here of, of, you know, we can get through this, but I worry about the mental health, given a lot of that's being shared out there in the media. So just as elected officials, you know, department heads as well that are on the call, just continue to really be that voice of positive, relentless positivity, as our former governor used to call it. Just to, it's, it's a great time to be in elected office and be a, really a beacon of light for people that may be a little concerned about things. So that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and we'll do a roll call on this just to be safe. Actually, before I even do that, before I entertain a motion, I'm going to quick look one more time, make sure there's no more public. I see nobody else, Jason. By the way, before we do this, if there is somebody that has a red tape on right now around here that you, you all might not see, our IT support the ability to hold this meeting safely and securely this morning. The ability to be so nimble, getting people, abilities to work from home on devices and stuff. I haven't seen anything like it, it's been pretty damn impressive, so well done. So, all right, good stuff. Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and support, and then we'll do a quick roll call on it.
Motion adjourned.
From Gilbert?
Okay.
Commissioner Heisinger, I see, all right, if you could please call the roll, ma'am clerk?
Mr. Heisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Groders?
Yes.
Mr. DeShane?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Kerry?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all.
All right, we adjourn everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, be safe.